This meeting was called in accordance with provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, C-231, D-1975. Notices were forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, its board members, and was posted ahead of the choir. I'd like to rearmonish this statement. The Asbury Park School District provides all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving, global society. I'd like to review the election results from this past Tuesday at 11:00. We had three three-year term seats that were open. We have Miss Conley Breach with 529, Mr. Dominic LaRaca with 521 votes, and Ms. Mark Lizinski with 546. If I could ask those three to please step up to the podium so we can do the swearing. Please, anybody who wants to take pictures. I say your name.
I come.
You solemnly swear or affirm?
I solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution?
That I support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of the Union?
And the Constitution of the State of the Union.
And I bear truth, faith, and allegiance?
And I bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
To the same?
To the same.
The governments?
The governments.
Established in the United States?
Established in the United States.
In this state?
In this state.
Under the authority of people?
Under the authority of people.
So help me God. I say your name.
I come.
Do I solemnly swear or affirm?
I solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications?
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law?
Prescribed by law.
For the office?
For the office.
A member of the Board of Education?
A member of the Board of Education.
A member of the Board of Education? That I am faithfully?
That I am faithfully.
And partially?
And partially.
And justly perform?
And justly perform.
All the duties without office?
All the duties without office.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I say your name.
I come.
Do I solemnly swear or affirm?
I solemnly swear.
That I am not disqualified?
That I am not disqualified.
As a voter?
As a voter.
Pursuant to?
Pursuant to.
RS-19, colon, four, dash, one?
RS-19, colon, four, dash, one.
That I am not disqualified?
That I am not disqualified.
For the office of member?
For the office of member.
For the Board of Education?
For the Board of Education.
You have conviction?
You have conviction.
With a crime or offense?
With a crime or offense.
Listed in?
Listed in.
NJSA?
NJSA.
Eighteen A?
Eighteen A.
Twelve, dash, one?
Twelve, dash, one.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, now I can take a roll call. Miss Anderson?
Here.
Miss Breach?
Here.
Miss Satiana?
Present.
Ms. Jones?
Miss LaRaca?
Here.
Miss Lizinski?
Here.
Mr. Saunders?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Okay, I'd just like to briefly review our policy on board officers. Election or nomination of the President, Vice President. Any member may place a member's name and nomination. Second is not required. Election for the office will be conducted by a roll call vote. Once the nominations are closed, candidate receiving the votes in the majority of all board members will be elected. In the case of no candidates receiving the majority, the vote is cast. The second election will be conducted with the two members receiving the highest votes. So what we'll do is we'll take nominations, and we'll close the nominations, and we'll vote on the first candidate. If that candidate receives the majority, we'll stop. If that candidate does not, then we'll move on to the next nomination. At this point, I'd like to open the floor for nominations of presidents.
Angela, the addition of the President.
Are you have a nomination? Okay, we'll close the floor for nominations. I'd like to take a roll call to nominate Miss Angela Anderson as President of the Board. Miss Lizinski?
Yes.
Miss Anderson?
Yes.
Miss Breach?
Yes.
Miss Satiana?
Yes.
Miss LaRaca?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, I'd now like to open the floor for nominations for Vice President.
I'm on the list.
Thank you. There are no nominations. We'll go on Mr. Saunders as Vice President. Miss Satiana?
Yes.
Miss Anderson?
Yes.
Miss Breach?
Yes.
Miss LaRaca?
Stand.
Miss Lizinski?
Stand.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Congratulations, Miss Saunders.
Good evening. First of all, I want to thank the, thank you, I want to thank the board members for trusting me with this position as the Board President. It's an honor for me to serve, and I'm happy to serve. Some time ago, I saw Asbury Park as a disassembled puzzle. Meaning that we needed a centerpiece, someone that would pull us together. And two years ago, just about, the Board appointed Dr. Racolette as our centerpiece. And he, being that centerpiece of the puzzle, then found the missing pieces of that puzzle in his executive administration. And they reached out to the staff, to the community, to their parents. And we, as a board, had reached out together. And we are also a part of that puzzle piece. Separately, we are important, but we're not significant. We don't become significant until we all pull together. And that is what we need to do, and we will do, as a team, because we are not divided. We are a nine-member team aboard here in Asbury Park. And we're going to work together with our superintendent and our state monitor because we are building a brighter future for our children, and that's greater than all of us. So I thank you for trusting me in this position. And I promise to serve, to always to be fair, to always to be inclusive, and no negativity, because that is going to stop us, that is going to stunt our growth. So I thank you for the opportunity to serve. Mr. Saunders? We're together, all of us.
I need a motion to approve items thirteen through the meeting.
I'm in.
Second.
These are files, a last meeting nature, for your organization. They'll speak in adoption of our board ethics. We intend to have a brief ethics training at our next board meeting, conducted by Mr. Ms. Roddy. We are confirming the meeting schedule for the coming year. I would like to note a correction on page three for October. October twenty-seventh is the Thursday of the SKEMORs convention. I've changed it to October twentieth, Thursday preceded. Most of these dates are on the fourth Thursday of the month. Whether it be from our board committees, procedures that we follow, newspapers that we advertise, and our policies and bylaws, and our faculty practices.
Roll call is beginning, please.
The Friday, the Thursday, and the nineteenth, Miss Lizinski?
Yes.
Miss Satiana?
Yes.
Miss Breach?
Yes.
Miss LaRaca?
I'm standing up to nineteen, all others, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Miss Anderson?
Yes.
As that concludes our organization agenda, I'd like to do another roll call for our regular meeting. Miss Anderson?
Here.
Miss Breach?
Here.
Miss Satiana?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Miss LaRaca?
Here.
Miss Lizinski?
Here.
Mr. Saunders?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
And I'm sorry.
I'm in.
You're here twice. I'm not the twice.
Madam President, my report, I would like to have a presentation of mine where I'm thanking the Board members for the Board of Education, Co-Harris. Would I give you a quick speech for the presentation of that? I would like to take this moment to acknowledge Board President and former Board President Nicole Harris, who over the course of all of her years of service, committed and dedicated to students and community of Asbury Park. Your efforts to extend educational opportunities to build and brighten a future for our students is evident at all levels, from the new created curriculum models for preschoolers, STEM programs in the elementary level, to the make-a-space lounge and the no school. With your support, our newest partnership with the College and Career Regency Institute and Brookdale Community College will allow us, will allow us to launch two highly competitive academic programs this year. Dream Academy of the College program and Dr. Ronan King Dream Scholars. Each program provides training for rising sixth and seventh, ninth, sixth, and ninth graders to assess rigorous academic curriculum that would benefit the family for the life of their high school. These are just a few of the latest examples, programs, initiatives, and views as a board member that provide the district to meet the needs of our students. Board President Nicole Harris, thank you for your commitment and dedication to our students. Your leadership style has brought a sense of balance and professionalism to the board. Your aim to be collaborative and transparent is evident during your first two weeks in the president's chair. You need to establish protocols and commitment to be in process-oriented as refreshment. I know you will continue to serve this community in days, months, and years to come to truly exhibit that true Christian pride. To my professional colleague and board member, Nicole Harris, you are the only member of the board that has sat on the other side of the base in the capacity of the district business administration. You're the only board member to truly understand the challenges and pressures of being a central office administrator. Therefore, when you speak of policy, or when you spoke of policy and protocol, it resonates with me. I can honestly say that I listened and took heed because I knew you were speaking from a place of experience. With all that being said, I still can't thank you enough for your view, casting a crucial vote at the ninth hour to ensure that our students will have the requisite literacy skills to comprehend, think logically, and become a full reader. I'm sure you will continue to be engaged in the educational process and respectfully challenge me to build a brighter future for the students of Asbury Park. Therefore, I will continue to have my moral compass pointed towards the students of Asbury Park. Tonight, we will honor the service of our board members and the still prominent Asbury Park District Medal of Honor. Board Secretary Jeff Mr. Mason, please meet the recording for the ceremony. May I ask for former Board President Nicole Harris and Board Member, Nicole Harris, to join us in the recording to receive the Asbury Park District Medal of Honor.
A special appreciation presented to you, Nicole Harris, by Asbury Park Board of Education, recognition of dedicated service to the schoolchildren of our community. Signed, Dr. Ronan Racolette, Superintendent, April twenty-eight, eighteen, February. A special appreciation presented to you, Ms. Nicole Harris, by the Asbury Park Board of Education, recognition of dedicated service to the schoolchildren of our community. Signed by Dr. Ronan Racolette, Superintendent.
Dr. Racolette, we turn the floor to you for presentations.
Madam President, thank you very much. Over the years, it's been most of this administration we've always tried to be transparent, open, and also provide a glimpse or a window into what we do in the school district. The last few months, we've presented to the board and the community members with data, once a discipline data, part data, and our internal data and testing. So today, we wanted to light it up and let the principals come in and tell their story of their building, minus us telling them what to present. So today, I'm looking at this for the first time in the board. In regards to our school, we have the Barack Obama School, we have the high school showcase, and we have the middle school showcase. So we have the Barack Obama showcase, presented by the principal, Ms. Barack Obama.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to begin by following the ASAP reporting about the Adams business harassment incident that was broken. He told me I had five minutes. I thought we had fifteen minutes. Didn't you? And he threatened me. He said I had five minutes. Once again, good morning, y'all. Good morning. I'm at work now. Good evening. Good evening. When we were told we had presentations, our roots got hurt. And we were trying to figure out what we were gonna do, and what we wanted to do. What we decided was the rigor relevance student relationship and student engagement framework built that, and that's a big initiative. And we decided to build our presentation around that because pretty much everything we're doing, our building is centered around that. So, as soon as this time is ready, we will begin. Enjoy. The CIR process has become pretty much part of my building culture. So every discussion is centered around rigor relevance, student engagement, and student relationship. Teachers are constantly, interchanging conversations between one another and with the meeting, my business associate, my coaching coach, as to how they can make their instruction more rigorous, and our trainings that we do, and our planning. We even try to make our trainings rigorous and relevant. We don't want our teachers to be engaged. Furthermore, one of the large pieces is the student relationship. Teachers are constantly working on that, we're all constantly working on that, to build better relationships with our students, because of course, you know, that prevents many things, like behaviors and incidents, because once students trust you, and they know that you care about them, and they come to you rather than maybe that. So I just really feel like the ITM process in this district, speaking just from my building, has really, really worked. The mentoring that we see from Bobby Axie has been amazing. I've learned a great deal in terms of how to be a better and more creative in my building. I think my teachers have seen a lot of evidence of that. And we, even though we use that a lot, now we're using it, it's more focused, it's more relevant, and it's more meaningful and versatile. So the CIR process and rigor relevance, student engagement, and relationships have really become a live document recorded so that they can look at, use each other's instruction, and make improvements and changes in their instruction. So I mean, it's, I, I think it's always a run start going on in our district, but I feel like in terms of the CIR practice, if there's a run start going on, then Barack Obama is going to improve. The equation is the fact that all of us on this entire board level is privy to all the strategies and structures, features that we need, and therefore means that all of them are at the same level right here. And I suppose my management thoughts, and I know immediately what I need to do. And also, I can also figure out from what I did with my first block, what works, what doesn't work, and by the end of the day, I have actually refocused where I'm finding it be necessary. I feel like I've advanced in material better than I'm patching. And I'm, at that three local, something like that, it's helpful to me to be able to go and teach in the other class. Because I like to go to my classroom and wonder, okay, have I been using rigor? Hasn't I used it more? And then get a sense of, okay, well, maybe in this one area, I wasn't implementing it as much, and now I'm more aware of it.
The, okay, challenge, we have a good challenge. We focus in on one discipline, and goes deep on that discipline, fifty-two. In terms of being a development thing, that are going to be more rigorous development, and we can go in Richmond, because those kids who go to Richmond, they would be, of course, the children who aren't there yet, if you want to get them there. Particularly, in speaking with Ms. Sarge, people's family, on that conversation I had with this one partner, was to kind of put all of us on the same tune of music, so that we're all speaking the same, that we know what's happening from third, fourth, and fifth, and that we're able to see the strengths of what happened from previous year in the building.
All right, I'm trying to sort of kind of, I don't know, I thought it was a crisis, so I got to think in the mind of this stuff, but also enjoy it, so not to hope, but to learn from it and this stuff.
Whereas, I'd say, we should not be here all the year in the building, for the teachers to have dialogue, so we can focus just on one subject at a time. And we can really delve into scenarios, using, like, the plan, help guide our instruction, and focus on one subject. And this way, we can have the dialogue between the teachers as they're transitioning to the students' class.
The bar which begins last year, from September to June, where it's ongoing at one handed. See that there's actually a decrease in the students, but the red bar which is this year, from September to June, where there's a substantial increase of only sixty-six percent in ELA. We always say, to what we believe this is all, to what we believe these are, have a lot of the older teacher needs, and the current.
Are you, Adam McGrath, I'm sure you're... This is a major focus of making discipline relevant, teaching where it's at. Basically based on good communication skills. If you're new, if you've made this day, fixing it, moving it, and move on. We've also got this year that we need to adapt to your environment. We have teachers with different styles, and you can adjust your behavior, and make a positive change. Dacting, adjusting, and making a positive change. There's a one skill that will help you, you keep that regardless, and you'll be more successful. College, you're good.
We're broken down.
I challenge my students and my staff to a dance, part dance challenge. And here's the challenge. Hey, this is there. That is the end.
Thank you, Captain. As you wanted to presentation, and then showcase, Madam President, and the board who presents the high school showcase, showcase to the children of our school. While Bob Arden is very clear, we go to one of the part challenges. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Captain.
My name is Dr. Sean Allen. I am the principal of the Dr. Mark McPhee Junior Middle School. I'm here representing the staff, students, and my administrative team, the senior. This year, at MLK Junior, which was formerly known as the Ed Grade of Middle School, we have undergone a great number of things. The presentation that's prepared for you is the actual slideshow for you, but we want to open up with a word from our students. So if we could hit the lights.
Everybody, you have a book they could, sometimes I bring on computers or a book, and it also helps me, like, say, if there's some stuff that I don't understand, say, if I bring it home, then I have to add new stuff, like, whether it's Disney, or, like, music about.
Um, I think we're going to be better, um, more, um, working better on all of, we will need to improve the software a little bit, um, I think, six seconds. We will need to help with English, understanding the content more, exploring social studies, science, and math, kind of, the words better, um, I understand it more, um, hurry faster in English, um.
The best, the best thing about Middle School is the students, because it's not very fun, and, you know, the students, and, yeah, you have to tell them.
So the new, um, is basically a place where it's a unit that has, I think, a lot of students here, and we know we're addressing all the things, what we need, or just to talk. Um, but it's definitely, it's on the other side, so if you're, you can, when you're still out, like, if you're, might have a lot of your head. Um, there are really good things that they do out, like, there's a big, big, big one table, and, and even a little, um, the robot, like, the robot, um, and really, that's a big curve.
The reason why I chose PPSI is to help the community, and help people, and to teach kids, like, that to follow their leader, and follow, follow, be, 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 achieve their, their stuff, so that this is what people say, and always say, we're good.
I'm a member of PBSI Junior Community, and it's the group that's had like twenty committee. We try to give source, like, give response time, but other than that, it's good, good grades, and John Colman, and a lot of community.
PBSI is junior, is the number one community in the school. I serve as the president and stewardess of community service, meaning we're one parenting, helping out around the city. Also, I'm going to meet the candidate for youth scholars, which is a partnership with the Brooklyn Community College, to get resources to grow, and I'm going to be a president. How has PBSI Junior helped you with your candidacy for junior college?
It's taught me how to work with others, how, how be responsible, and that it's a serious, um, um, important.
So while we're transitioning back to our presentation, we thought it was very important to hear the voices of the students, that video compilation was put together by Vice Principal, so we're there. We thought it was important to focus on the words of the students, as opposed to seeing acting of the student. We've done a lot of things and programs initiatives this year, and some of the highlights are, we have revamped our master schedule. Last year, we had teachers teaching multiple grades and multiple subjects. This year, the subject is from one subject to one grade level. We introduced our maker space, which was our alternative ed program location for our students who did not conduct themselves well, so with our alternative schools, with the school, we revamped that space. If you're new, I would welcome you to come over to the middle school to visit that space, so that way you're aware of how dynamic that has transformed our students during, during the day. Our core program is B1A, searchers forty-four, as well as we had to re-launch PBSIS, and that is our positive behavior contribution to support, sort of our character ed link to really transforming our school. As everyone in the district has undertaken the rigor relevance framework, we as well have worked with Dr. Tricia Montgomery as a one-on-one executive coach, and we have, you know, gone through the rigor relevance framework that has been the core of the conversation with our government and our leadership team, which comprises of building-based administrators as well as teachers. And so this is the framework, and you have that there in your handout. You can see various pictures that are a little clearer in your presentation down up on the screen. Professional learning, we really focused this year on providing job ended professional development for the teachers, working on instructional strategies, and also focused on rigor and relevance. One of the four components of that is our five weekly principles work, which we combine in there, not only instructional support, but resources for the teachers to utilize, as well as a communication vehicle for myself and the administrators to the teachers, and from the supervisors as well. So it's a one streamlined communication that I send out to the teachers and to all the staff within the building. These are lists of our ongoing, you know, professional development, HMH, Putin Milton. Next year, we'll be undergoing math and ADE, which will be another supporting for our mathematics intervention. Next generation science standards, Link is our data warehouse, where we'll be utilizing math and analyzing evidence statements, and making function-based data decisions, utilizing the data from the link, which will also help to drive our instruction forward. So what I want to focus you in on is our three-year beginners, we look at those, you know, we started off, and we have the progress and gains in each of those areas. And we see students demonstrated a plus twelve increase in advanced coding, and so annual developing, you see areas, you want to see a decrease and increase as you move forward. Again, same thing, but I really want to highlight... Again, same thing, but I really want to highlight two is the student demonstrated a negative ten decrease. That means our students are moving out of that level and moving into the other level. So students are leaving out of the low levels and going increasing our student population by five percent in basic comprehension, four percent in proficient comprehension, and two percent in advanced comprehension. So we're seeing gains through our academic core interventions and reading and tutorials. These are another set of our mentoring programs that we launched this year. Fleet Program is our partnership with the New Jersey State Police. We have Project Ghana, the Omega South Five paternity file. Some of our mentoring programs, which spearheaded our tie day back in November. All of our young men got ties and learned how to tie ties on that day. Our Park Academy, Pride PBSIS. And so we have a plenty of things there, so that's what, you know, we would be really happy. But one of the other key partnerships is for our young ladies. We have Delta Teams, which we just really re-launched this year with the Mamas County. Mamas County, yes. Mamas County Alumni Chapter. And so why that's important is because before, our young ladies were not able to attend those meetings because they were adducting. And so I worked with Mr. Buford, as well as the Mamas County Alumni Chapter, to house it at the middle school. So that way, our young ladies who walk could participate. And so we had, they had the meeting last, two weeks ago, and it's heavily comprised of our young ladies from the middle school and high school participating in. So these are some of our highlight pictures in here. Want to follow us on Twitter. We very much appreciate our stuff. PBSIS, I want to say publicly, that is definitely one of the core strengths of my administrative team. Ms. Jackson oversees that. She does a bang-up job with working and really galvanizing our students, particularly with PBSIS, PBSIS Junior. Ms. Jackson does a phenomenal job with that. She's really creative. You know, Ms. Jackson, she's over the top. She organizes everything. And trust me, believe me, she, it flutters throughout the school. And so a lot of our climate and culture is due to the re-launching of PBSIS. And I really wanted to publicly recognize Ms. Jackson and both of them still working with the work that they do and solidifying our climate and culture. As you see, our, our suspension report detailed that in our last, you know, meeting here before the fourth, our discipline has gone down. We also looked at doing some other creative things with our students. And so this data reflects, and you know, middle school March is a heavy ending month, right? And so, you know, to look at those, particularly, so that's, if you look at the numbers, it's not thirteen. Out of those numbers, the special ed population is included. So we just wanted to break it out so that you can see it, okay? On October third, we had a soft opening of our Baker Space Student Lounge. Just we're still in its construction phase, but I promised the students that we would open it by a given time. And so although we're still doing some cosmetic things, we had our initial launch, and then we had our grand opening here where everyone got an opportunity to go in and really partake, because we had gotten the environment as we wanted. We're still building on it. However, it is a core area that our students look forward to going into. One of the other pieces that we did this year was our students in the middle school denied recents. So what we ended up doing was going out to the basketball court right off of the, um, the field, and we have recents. We had talked about this with Dr. Brad, in the summertime with Mr. Jordan, we were a little concerned how we, you know, work with the community, with the community kind of, and the community actually asked that time between our lunches, that the community does not go into the playground, I mean, into the basketball courts when we're out there, and it was, it became seen. So now between ten forty, it's on the top, that's our space, right? And so it goes to show that, for once, the community understands that our students need this outlet. And, you know, I want to thank that surrounding community, because no one had more access permission. And the students now feel ownership to go out and be out there. We've gone on different Bishop Bucks. We're every into Bishop Bucks. And so those are part of PBSIS and incentive for our students to go on different trips. You'll see in there ice cream social and different movie things that we do as incentives for our middle school students. Our students, again, it's for us to be a big stop by address to a press day, where we add a lot of participation from men in the community, particularly of this outstanding organization. No pun intended. To help our young men. And in middle school, a lot of our young men did not know how to tie ties. And so it prepared them, Dr. Red came, the local media, and it was a very good turnout. Partnering with Jorbert Fardis for our fitness challenge. Mrs. Orbeau restored that aspect of that in partnership with Mr. Fardis. Our Bishop movie. And then one of the things that we've done this year is I'm kind of digging into symbolism. And so just like our Teacher of the Year and Staff Member, we gave them crowns. I believe that, you know, it needs something tangible. I'm an old WWF team, I don't know if you can see. And so I thought, you know, giving our Teachers of the Month, the heavyweight belt, but you'll see that in here, they got the heavyweight belt, they got the key belt. The Teacher of the Week, got the Intercontinental. They had, you got the back belt, they had the mask at home, you know, to, to, to the next person who wanted that week, they got certificates. But the other aspect of it was just recognizing them, and then those staff members who were selected also got a partner space for that week for that lunch. I'm very, very proud of my custodial engineers. I think I have the best sort of engineers in the district. I'm biased. They have set up and made the middle school a place that is clean, conducive to learning. And after having passed two white glove inspections during the summertime, they have earned the kudos from myself, as well as anyone who walks into that building to see the brightness, the cleanliness, and the care that they do take in that building. And this is one of the other aspects of, we have a monthly staff breakfast, coordinated by the SAD to kind of commune and fellowship and build a climate for the staff as well. So moving ahead, you've heard briefly about the early college program, as well as the youth scholars. We had a meeting with the parents, maybe a week or so, two ago. That process has been moving very fast, but very consistent with the timeline outlined by Dr. Red, as well as with Brooklyn Community College. I'm really excited about this program. We got a meeting today, looking at our schedule, really being invented and created on how we're going to provide services that are rigorous and relevant and consistent with the high goals of building a brighter future for these students here at Aspery Park. And this was just a couple of snapshots. You'll see pictures of our current eighth graders working on and applying their application, because these are just other tools that they need to understand that your resume represents you before you walk in the door. And so these applications are just these students' academic resumes. And we want them to be a reflection of the expectation that we have for them and that we want to pass on to any of these in the high school.
Questions, questions? I want to commend you. Commend you on, in recess, for the children, but are we saying that's not, that property behind the schools? Do we own it?
Yes, the property behind the middle school, we own. Basketball courts refurbished by the city. The district had entered a ten-year agreement at that time. The city would pay for the refurbishment of those courts. They would get some use of the courts, but that's very non-school.
Dr. Adams, that's the report, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
And Ms. Baumgartner?
Excellent, good chance to thank you. We also have an excellent birthday.
Thank you.
Now, I'm going to present my life, High School Showcase. President, Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We've been appointed board members and be appointed board members which fall into the lot this year. My name is Lesmo Bertil. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the high school principal. I am accompanied by my vice principal, Ms. Kelly Adele, Ms. Kimmy Taylor, reading specialist, and activities coordinator, Ms. Jaclyn Ethel, our spot director, E and N Spot Director. I'd just like to acknowledge some of my staff members who are here tonight. Mr. Michael Zajak, Union President, I'm sorry, building rep. We also have Ms. Denise Hughes, who works with the College Career Department, Mr. Timothy Fossey, who's our dropout prevention officer and football coach. We also have Mr. Chief Shelley Maxon, who's our DRTC teacher. And last but not least, for everybody who not seen one else, I would acknowledge who are here, Ms. Winwin Millions, our head security guards. I'd like to offer a brief thanks that we acknowledge, staff, and after our history. And I do that because of the fact that I stand on their shoulders, and it's because of them that we're able to do what we do. We have a vision and a mission statement for the district for you. I'm not going to read it, too, because it's already in the red box, so it's in the drawer. Before I proceed, I'd just like to, please, ask for your forgiveness. I had a wardrobe malfunction this morning, so forgive my casual attire. So now with the vision and mission statement, whatever we do, before we begin an activity project or whatever, we always keep the vision and mission in mind. Every activity that we do at the high school, we have to follow that. Before we, you've heard Dr. Adams and Ms. Baumgartner acknowledge the rigor-relevant framework and the different instructional practices that they've adopted, due to the trainings that we brought down through the coaches and the other formats that we're adopting through this program. Last fall, we discussed, we presented data to you. We talked about the graduation rate, sixty-six percent because of the individuals who I acknowledged earlier. We talked about the attendance, the discipline. In the winter, we discussed the discipline. This time, as Dr. Red said, we had some creative freedom, if you will, to present to you what we felt was necessary. And I want to let you know that Aspery Park High School, not only is a school, but it's an institution, it's the hub of the community at times. What we have for you was a picture of students. Do you mind if you just demo that? Thank you very much. We have before a substitution of students and staff. Because of these individuals, the school functions. The administration mission statement is something that we worked on last year. You can see it at the bottom, it says June twenty fifteen. We collaboratively worked on this, making sure that it supported what Dr. Red and Central Office had created for the district. It was, it aligned itself to all the practices that Dr. Red and the committee had communicated with us and to us. And we made sure that as a staff, we honored that and we supported it. Now, as administrators, we made sure that we identified the three most important parts: students, staff, and parents of the community. Now, throughout my second of presentation, you'll see, since, second parts of the mission statements that we had created for the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen school year. I'll not read that to you until we get to the next part. Now, with this particular page, you'll see that we have various pictures of what we call Challenge Day. Challenge Day is something that we do for our students so that we can foster a clean and respectful environment. And Challenge Day, students, they get to be in a safe environment. They communicate with someone whom they build a relationship with within about two hours. And the safety of the gymnasium, as you'll see, you can see the gentleman there, who's, we don't allow him to wear hats, and they get by sometimes. But during Challenge Day, they're allowed to do that because they're going to be comfortable. We expect them to be able to share information with us that may save their lives. We've had students who confided, Miss told us about certain things that have taken place in their lives that no one else would have known until they got to do it and share that with this man in our. And I purposely put this picture here, because as many of you know, I very fondly, our head custodian, Mr. Xavier Gibbs. A part of our mission statement for the district and the school says, we have to have a foster clean and respectful environment. This is a Saturday morning, Mr. Gibbs came in early Saturday morning, and coincidentally, I was there early Saturday morning with him. So I took this picture, and he didn't realize that I was taking the picture. I told him I wouldn't tweet that one out, thanks, don't worry about it. So I did, but I found use for it today. So again, we are showing you what we do, things that no one else knows about. The National Honor Society, and again, we're still with being, fostering a clean and respectful environment, trying to teach our students how to be wholesome students. The National Honor, the National Honor Society students on Saturdays, then at weekdays, they either tutor students at the elementary level, or they commit to various community building projects and other projects which would help them and train them on how to be good citizens. Here you have students who are volunteering, and they're working the food line there. They have students who are helping with the cleanup on a Saturday morning. Of course, something that goes unnoticed, this is Mrs. Francis, this Ruby Francis. There she's fixing a student's hair. That's something that, it's simple, however, it's one of the things that make us loved by the students, because we're not afraid to approach them and help them out. Again, these are some of the things that we do that no one knows. PBSIS, foster a clean and respectful environment. What you have there is the meeting, and that word right there tonight. The meeting, you'll notice when you enter the building, you'll see the head security officer, and you see the meeting next to him. Inside that meeting are PBSIS tickets. These students, though they don't appear to be happy, some of them, they just received their PBSIS report for that week. Here you have students who are cleaning up, assisting with the cleanup process in the cafeteria. They did not get awarded, but they were just there to help out. These types of things, we always like to showcase and just emphasize so that everyone sees what the students do. This young man is enjoying himself during lunch. He was allowed to dance that day. There's the DJ back there. That's all for PBSIS. These are some of the things that we do that go unnoticed. Myself, I don't like to talk about the things that I do, because I feel as though we have so many other things that go on. However, I have to communicate some of the things and share some of the things that we do that go unnoticed. That's the thing, they've got to notice. So, up top, with the assistance of Dr. Christie Howard, we have collaborated with the community, the CAN organization. Up top there, you see Officer Tyron McAllister, class nineteen ninety-six, so am I. We have several other gentlemen who have joined us, and reference pastors and police officers. Now, the meaning behind this is not only to build community relations, but also we have to teach the students about their civic duties and responsibilities. Well, the whole school say, that's something that we're going to be doing and talking with the students during the Juned Center programs. We've already started meeting several students to discuss the way that they approach people of authority. Next month, I'm sorry, June, June seventh. To date, for the community members, we are together. We're hosting a program for the students where the males and females will be addressed by their peers. And the idea is to empower the students and provide them with summertime opportunities, employment opportunities. Also support, at the end of our program, we will be working with other organizations in the community. The Eagle from Boys and Girls Club, the Asbury Park Police Department. We're creating a site where the students, the young men and the young females, will be able to send information or questions out to these individuals and they'll get a response. So we're not just having a meeting with them to say, hey, listen, walk, use the sidewalk, pay attention to authority. We're also providing them with support systems when they're on their own. So that's going to be a big push for us and look forward to that program. Now, what you see here is me working the, on certain Saturdays, I have a radio show and educational segment that I share information about education to the Asians and some of the Latino community members. And that's what we, that's what I do on Saturdays. If you even find me working with the Good News Foundation, here we are playing for the touring program that we started, which runs from, we have a touring program on Saturdays and we have the touring taking place Monday through Thursday, which Ms. Jaclyn Edlin will discuss further. And here we have a new initiative, which is, it started out what is a Caribbean theme project. However, the high school's adopted a world rule theme, so we're representing everyone in the building. So we're working together, here is the TV in the background, just smiling and happy to see the people working together and leading the building towards a brighter future. Provide all students with a comprehensive progressive education. The experience that we provide students, it may not be perfect. I like to be honest with you, and sometimes someone said that to me quick, but, but, but. But I like for you to get a clear picture of what's happening. We are not perfect, however, we have our moments when we are. President Alvez Anderson, that correction, Alvez Anderson, said that individuals were important, but together were significant. If you stop and look and see the beautiful parts of Asbury Park High School, where the students get together, they learn, the teachers work with them, and we plan. This is what provides students with a comprehensive and progressive education looks like. The college career, career pathways. They had various, several trips that they've taken to enhance students' educational experience. Hands-on activities are provided for the students. The students who went to Harvard are so proud. We have so many students who are doing great things. This year, they went to Harvard twice. Started in the summertime and this winter, they just attended again, and they performed well. We had several students placed within the top twenty out of thirty schools who went there to ask them. These are students who are outperforming some of the greatest, greatest debaters. These are our great debaters. These are the moments that make us smile and remember that we are in a place that's making some great, great productive students and we're producing some great programs and activities for our students. Again, we have the college career, ready this program for our students. We have them attend the police academy. Up top, you'll see the students here. There's a simulated interview process that we have for the students. The next, the next thing for the district vision and mission is to see the diversity of all of society. At the high school, we have an individual named Miss Moni. Miss Moni Gillis, right there. She is the library reading specialist. She's also the individual who I've charged with the task of starting our neighbor space. What she's been doing is researching neighbor space information. We've been attending different workshops and training. On Saturday, one Saturday last month, I attended the TEDx training on neighbor space and I shared that information with her. So what we're doing is one, pacing ourselves because I have ideas. Sometimes I throw ideas out to people and my kids fan is some of my staff. I'll have these great ideas, but whatever, fail to recognize is that it does not work overnight. Allow the staff time to work, provide them the necessary resources to execute our agenda and mission. That's actually straight from our mission statement. So I took this Moni Gillis advice and we're working on our neighbor space this year and we're making sure that it's something that's functional. Another project that I handed over to was the BBN project. BBN, that's the District Broadcast News Hour. That's our students, which will see here, who have worked with AP, TV, with Safety Point. And this is what we call the boardroom in the mornings at seven-thirty. I meet the students in the fall and winter, and now they made that transition to us to begin. We'll also support staff collaboration. This year's staff have given PLC trainings that's focused and surrounds the rigor relevance framework. They also have monthly agendas for the staff. Every week, I send out a weekly update on the Monday. I also send out a midweek update to staff just to inform them of the current events and any sudden changes. Again, it's not perfect, but sometimes you do have lax men, activities that change to the schedule. And that is my respect and this, Dr. Edlin, it's all from this side.
Good evening, Asbury Park Board members, Asbury Park High School administration, community members and teachers. I want to thank you for allowing me to present on the School Basic Service Program run by BNA. I'm going to try to be very brief, so I don't get lost by just a minute. School Basic Service Program in high school, they're the biggest type of a spot in run by BNA. BNA is a century-long program, it's the second largest BNA association in the United States. We are under, SPOT is under the Children and Family Health Institute, where there's a lot of community programs that assist within Asbury Park, such as including our, excuse me, our P and L Center, are with programs and also the School Basic Service Program here at the high school. So, the School Basic Service Program is a GCF-funded program through New Jersey. School Basic Service Program has been around since nineteen eighty-seven in New Jersey. There are over ninety school bases in the state of New Jersey. The School Basic Service Program at Asbury Park High School has actually been around since the year two thousand and has been run by BNA since two thousand and seven. The SPOT stands for Student Potential Optimized for Transitions. And at school base, we basically have a four team, myself, Mr. Hampton, who is our LCSW, Rodney Solomon, who is our Youth Development Specialist, and Captain Donahue, who is our APN. Together, we service those students that are registered in our program to assist them on a variety of different bases. We offer a lot of programs and services. Our four pillars are learning support, helping youth development, enrichment, and counseling. Some of the programs we offer are Homer Club, Lunchtime Talk, movie nights, medicine, work and school, skiing nights, counseling. And our biggest program is our Dream Team Challenge. I'm going to highlight some of them. As far as our counseling services, it ranges from, if you're having a bad day, whether you're a peer, having some benefit issues, or maybe you're just not, you have some, maybe some mental health or short-term depression. So we could, we have our LCSW that assists. I can assist as well, or we can refer algebraic care. Okay, our academic assistance, that's run by our Youth Development Specialist Rodney Solomon. We offer tutoring, as Mr. Bertil said, with the Good News Foundation, with our Honor Society, and we send referrals to Good News Foundation for their Saturday tutoring program. Students are able to come for tutoring during lunchtime or after school with our students in the National Honor Society. And depending on their level of service and what they need, we determine if they get to be seen one time a week, two times a week, or three times a week. We also offer college prep services in terms of helping them with the basket, assisting in college essay writing, scholarship search, and also just making sure they have everything in place so that they apply to college on time and they're actually making sure that the schools they're applying to are within their reach in terms of GPA, SAT, and just making sure that they're aware of the college process and what they're going to look forward to when they graduate. Our Health Education piece is run by our APN. She comes to me once a week, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And she can do anything from physicals to immunizations to making sure that our students who don't have insurance actually get the prescription to order and we make sure that they're paid for by our program. Our biggest program is our Dream Team Challenge Scholars Program. This program is for any student that's enrolled into our SPOT program. They basically get points for doing what they're supposed to be doing. If they turn in their homework, they turn in their test scores, their quiz scores, they get points to use for our Dream Team Store. At the Dream Team Store, they can buy snacks, gift cards to Walmart, where they can earn different prizes. Each month, whoever has the most points gets a twenty or thirty dollar gift card. The member of the market period gets a fifty dollar gift card. Right now, you can see in the pictures, a little small, we have a group of sisters. There's four of them in the high school, and they are winning every single month and every single market period. So they're our top performers, but they're basically fighting each other to see who can get member of the market period. And actually, the one that was the last market period is the one that just got over today. Enrichment, we have a number of groups that we do. We have Lunchtime Talk with Tom, who's our LCSW, our Dream Team Charlotte. We have Knowledge Club on Thursdays, which talks about current events, different types of teen issues that they're dealing with, and other, and other, sorry, monkey initiatives. This monkey, we talk about child abuse and also autism awareness. We have our girls group and our young men's group. We also have an initiative with Red Child Abuse New Jersey, where we run through subhuman trafficking entitled My Life, My Choice and Empowering Young Men. We also are part of the Grand Thunder Program, Two River Theater, where we get to take our students to see a replay once a quarter. I just want to highlight some statistics for you. As of April twentieth, we have two hundred and ten of the three hundred and thirty students enrolled in our program. So that means we have sixty-two percent of the high school enrolled in the SPOT program. Of those two hundred and ten students, definitely they start to see some type of counseling services, whether it be vocational, group counseling, crisis creating, group counseling, peer mediation, or inter-management. We also have community service. Today, students have participated in over forty hours of community service with Habitat for Humanity. We do an annual holiday gift wrapping at Howard Mall. We also work on the youth build project to help rebuild homes with hurricane standing. Once a month, people are first met in Methodist Church for our supervision. And we also do holiday events at the senior center, as well as daycare packages for coming class. Some of our employment and job reference, we had forty-three students who have received employment services, whether that be referrals to our CPR program at the high school or working on a career interest inventory to see where students actually are testing to what particular career they're in and aligning them with some background on those careers, also doing some mockings of doing. We also have a local businesswoman and a substitute teacher for Asbury Park High School, Ms. Kate Harris, who runs our group mission employment readiness program. And they've been leading for twelve weeks now, where they actually get interviewed by business owners on the boardwalk and get hired on the SPOT, if selected. Some of our mentoring groups, we worked with Mr. Fossey earlier this year, with the football team, for the football players that participate in our Empowering Young Men group. During the first phase, eighteen male students participated, and we just finished our second phase in March, and ten students participated. We run the human trafficking in My Life, My Choice once a year for ten weeks, and we had an average of eight students. Our girls group, which is run by our Rutgers University interns, went for six weeks, and we had an average of five students. And as I mentioned before, we have our weekly knowledge club and Lunchtime Talk with Tom. Some prevention activities, we do presentations in the cafeteria, VR high class station, on different types of initiatives. We also have one eighty turning lives come around, BNA resource network, COVID and health. Or we just talk about other prevention things that are going on that are, excuse me, that are, that the students are interested in. For our recreation activities, we hold our SPOT Olympics, movie nights, game nights, open life nights. And we also have Rutgers role-playing for life that come in and they do improv and theater with the things once upon a time. These are just some pictures of some of the services the students have done. In the top left, you can see, that's actually from the sixteenth of this month. There was a better garden community service, and students participated in that. At the bottom, we have pictures of our annual SPOT Thanksgiving, the Chorus Bus, which came around last school year in two thousand fifteen. The bottom right, we have our student from King University that did a paint and punch during the record for Black History Month. We also have pictures from our primary young men in the upper left hand. Some pictures from Two River Theater of the students that participated in the play. And we also have pictures from our holiday gift wrapping with Habitat for Humanity. And in the lower left, we have one of our students helping cut some wood for the Palisade Union Beach that was in October by Sandy. We also have some pictures here from our summer program and also our Junior Achievement Initiative, where the students at the SPOT are able to go to Durkwood Marshall and they do financial literacy and are basically the teacher for the day from grades one through five. We also have a picture from our children's team assembly, which basically shows the kids what they're like, pan peed, if they don't go down all right, but they don't go down very bad.
Good evening. My name is Kriti Taylor, I'm the activities coordinator. I want to talk about some past activities. September, October, it's a very exciting month. Once at the Asbury Park High School, we had the homecoming activities, load building, all decorated, homecoming process, and of course, the parade. This year, our parade was fantastic. We had all the schools involved. It was just outstanding. Everybody started on time. It was just a great community effort. November, Thanksgiving luncheon in the cafeteria with students and staff. We also had our PBSIS kickoff. December, we had our holiday luncheon with staff and media center. Also, we had a holiday luncheon with the students. We played music, decorations, and we also gave out handbags. I had to find a reason to reach out to students. So my effort was to just go to them in the cafeteria and lunchtime. That gave them a sense of ownership, it relaxed them, and gave us a chance to build relationships. And February, we had our Black History Writing Contest. We also had a Black History Luncheon with students, decoration and music. We played Temptations, The Supremes. So they really got a chance to connect with the old times. And March, we had a student luncheon with students, decorations and giveaways. This April, we had a cultural diversity luncheon week. It started with a park. On Monday, we had Asian food, Tuesday, we had Italian food, Wednesday, we had gold food, Thursday, we had Hispanic food, and Friday, I don't know, and it was good. Our future activities consist of our Caribbean World Month. Activities are scheduled for an entire month of festivals, work in progress. Our principal has put together a very diverse group of teachers, and we are working on it. May fifth is Seagull's Month, the nail celebration in the cafeteria, your lunch. And also, we have Patriot Flag Day, which is also incorporated in the Caribbean World Month celebration. We have our Red Carpet Event for the Junior Senior Prom, that's on May nineteenth. In front of the high school, starts at five o'clock. It was outstanding last year, and this year, we expect it to be even better. I'm really excited about our annual paddle club football competition. We have two teachers, Ms. Dunst and Ms. Crosswell here, and they be training these seniors and junior girls to play tonight football. And young men ought to cheer you. So, you're all invited to come out to this grand occasion. The band is invited, and Ms. Edlin is now involved with the SPOT, and we just want everybody to participate. Senior activities. June third is our musical concert. June thirteenth through the twenty-second is senior graduation practice. We'll start at the high school, we'll finish graduation practice at the fair amount. June tenth is our athletic banquet. June fifteenth is our senior breakfast at eight AM to two, that consists of seniors signing their books, getting yearbooks, eating breakfast, taking pictures, and just building memories. That consists of seniors signing their books, getting yearbooks, eating breakfast, taking pictures, individual memorials. June sixteenth is our senior awards night. And June twenty-second is our senior reception and the big day is graduation. Thank you very much. Oh, we all know about that. Our closing remarks now are with our principal, Ms. McTell.
This, uh, this past, uh, was our students, our students worked on a project that is very significant to, I wouldn't say the district. It was the vision that we all worked on this year, which was to build a brighter future. And the students, part of leadership is making sure it's very positive. And this is significant to me because of the fact that a teacher wanted my attention, and we set up money. The students wanted to work on it, and they created these hard hats. And this is what we see as it coming to fruition. And Brookdale Community College actually showcased the students' work, and this is what we have here. And during that event, the students wanted to hand this to Dr. Reverlett. And Ms. Johnson, her absence asked that please hand this over to, so if you would mind, would you please receive your hard hat? Dr. Reverlett, thank you very much for the opportunity, sir. Thank you for the vision, and this is a sign of solid effort. Because we support you, no matter what direction you lead us in, we're still there behind you. And to the board members, we support you too, and hopefully we all be united. And this year is going to be a powerful year, and years to come will be much better.
Well, I wanted to thank the principals and their team for coming out today and presenting their presentation more importantly telling their story. Having the opportunity to tell the board, to tell the community the things that you're doing, because sometimes these things may be overlooked, and it's important to tell our story. So I want to thank all the principals, first on behalf of the school district. And I say, "Hardhat Nation," and then when I see posted tweet, Hardhat Nation is a group of dedicated individuals that's committed to building a brighter future. That's what it's about, it's plain and simple. You'll see that through these presentations, you see that building a brighter future, it's about hope and about opportunities. From our elementary schools to our high schools, to the programs we're giving to these kids, it's about hope and it's about opportunity. So my challenge to the board always is to please have our moral compass facing towards the students. It's going to be times that we're going to have to do our jobs, and we're going to have to disagree at things. But if we keep the moral compass towards our students, and remember, you are Hardhat Nation. You're here to build a brighter future, and we can prosper, we can truly take this issue to another level. So I thank my principals, thank the board for the support we're giving out there. Thank you.
Board members, do you have any questions for the principals or comments?
I have some comments for all the principals. And first, I didn't get a chance to say to the board members, who have left us in our former president, and she's still there. And then she slipped out, because I know she had fine to talk, to talk. She's like, I just wanted to say completely truthful that it was an honor. She was here when I came, and she is a blessing and a hard worker dedicated to the children of Asbury Park and the community as a whole. And with her, I will continue to stand and support this district and the future of this district and this community. Also, to our former board member, Ms. Love, who has been a polish to me at AGM. And I just want to continue to say thank you for that polish, to help shine you and to help me grow. Thank you. And also to principals, awesome schools, I am excited on where we are going, what we have done. I'm really telling a person that life is a chess game, not a chess game. And in the end, when the game is said and done, the winning move, the king, the check, the mate, will be prosperous and glorious town and school district. I want to say thank you to Ms. Bunbarner, to my favorite person, Mr. Gavin Brad, and also a great teacher, and also you have your school that I love, Mr. Williams. To the middle school, to thank you to Ms. Thea Jackson, who I love, and to Dr. Adams, and to Ms. Lil Bray, and to all the middle school staff who have been running here, you know, at Dr. Dine for my brief, and loveable Mark, sir, who was a student there. And also to the high school, it is a pleasure to be here. It is a pleasure to have students and family members in the high school, to see the growth of the students there, and to see the growth of the teachers and the community in there. It is a blessing to have witnessed and continue to witness the growth and the newness of Asbury Park High School. And just so I, president and vice president, I will always continue to show my support to this district and to this board to make sure that we continue to work and move forward in this community. It is a blessing to be here. I'll continue to stay and continue to work. And thank you all for everything, I'll just thank you for seeing the greatness of Asbury Park and the vaccine.
I've sat here for several presentations, and none of them was more appreciated than tonight. The efforts that people don't see, the quality that's put in, the atmosphere that's created by you guys. Me as a long live, me as a community member, me as just a man that cares greatly about the city and about the kids and about everybody in the home, but you know about you. I'm deeply, deeply appreciative for your efforts. Deeply appreciative for everybody that's sitting up here with you, regardless of differences, regardless of anything that we might not agree on. I appreciate your efforts, because the only thing we are all responsible for is the effort. And these kids, they see that. They see that effort. They understand that as people here like Mr. Brad, who was my teacher, was visiting there, he was funny, quirky. He's still here, giving it up. Ms. Bunbarner, who has my little brother, who's still here, giving it up. Mr. Martillo, I grew up around, were a family member in college. I see the fruition, I see the growth. Everybody that's sitting up here, Dr. Reverlett, and Hardhat Nation, man, is, for me, is a personal, a personal rap of what you're trying to do, because I understand it, and I definitely appreciate it. I understand it. Congratulations. Appreciate you sitting there. And again, these presentations tonight are so much more enlightening than every other qualitative presentation that we've been given, because this is what kids attract to, effort. So with that, thank you, welcome, new and returning board members. Let's make this year great.
Well, I'm not going to add anymore, because we said it all perfectly. Thank you very much. Awesome job. Just keep it up. As our kids, you're refining them, shining them up, so that they are the dreams of this human people. Thank you very much. All right, we are now in public participation in accordance with board policy zero one six seven. Please come to the podium with your name and your address, and we will give you a three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. This one thing I have to say, um, to board members, and we'll be like this. Um, just a, oh, my name is, but it's a little bit of a fourteen mile back, and we basically have a four inch mark. Um, there's a number of things I want to reach your attention and, and to the boards. Um, a few quarters, I guess, two quarters ago, the board did rename or name the courts that we talked about tonight on Class Act Avenue, that we have many courts. But unfortunately, to this day, we haven't put up a signage. And if you would, please consider to, um, holiday, to be dedicated, um, this January, you should know, community service and community great, late this January, serving the community of Asbury Park and, of course, the community of that. But we don't have a sign of you, we have never this, but it's not there. And it would be great to see that in the community. So I can, and all the neighbors can see, um, the support and signage properly. Um, also, secondly, I'd like to just say now, in fact, um, unfortunately, you know, we've had to lose, I guess, the board meeting. Um, our reception and, and office, and also, um, our decent board member, Anne, Anne Lombeau died. Um, let's just say, twenty nineteen, she was ninety-six. Ninety-six?
Ninety-six.
No, eighty. Well, the thing is, uh, this dude, children's rights, um, transition also. And if he would, um, give those people, um, a moment of doubt and respect, of work and dedication that he was trying to fight, I'm sure that the families, um, would feel a little certain.
Seeing that there is no other members at this time, we will close the public participation. Also, at this moment, as suggested and right as that, we, uh, be quiet or open to silence, please, in memory of Mr. Joseph Rins, the board member.
Ms. Mary Smith.
Ms. Mary Smith, please. We are now going to go to the state monitoring board.
I would like to also thank the board members that are leading for their service. Sorry that Nicole had to leave, but I wanted to make a special note. As the state monitor, uh, I can work with Nicole. I believe that she did an outstanding job this past year of introducing perhaps the, some of the ways that we can bridge some of the separation that has occurred over the years in the, on the board. She and I worked together to present and, uh, a report that we were going to work on and eventually distribute to the board in its final part of an action plan, where we could address many of the court rates that were actually recorded in CUSAC. I'm sure Mrs. Anderson, you and I can pick up where Nicole left off. She spent a lot of time on it, and she had some very, very good ideas. And I'd like to thank her, because I think we made a lot of progress. I've seen a lot of progress made in the district, particularly over the past year. And I think that it's a wonderful thing for the children of Asbury Park, because they are the ones that should be benefiting from whatever we do at this table. And I think that, um, what I would like to basically say is, I think Anne Ferry is making huge strides up. And I hope that this board will be able to put its differences aside and address the needs of the kids and forget about individual personalities and individual. To summarize it, it's time to let the past be the past and move forward. And I believe that we made some great strides this past year to do that. And we just hope that we, we can take that and work forward and work for them.
Just to piggyback on what she said, I don't remember or recall the last time we had a board realization game where we had no opponent, no opponents, the president and vice president. I think that's a testament to where we're going ahead, as far as we all bow to law. Nobody goes, and I think that shows you who we're going.
Also, I wanted to say to the state board, I appreciate you speaking. We've come a long way. Yes, I, I like to say, yeah, we actually say, oh, no. I know. I know, we're talking, conversing, you know, we don't, you know. I don't think we stick that into the dog being. And I know, I know that far. I know, I appreciate you too. I appreciate you also, and I'm just excited about this year. I'm excited about what's happening in this district. I'm excited about what's happening in this town, and I can't wait to continue to work. I know this board right now, if you jump right in, if you continue to work, you haven't stopped. So I, I just look forward to all the great pieces of bounds that Dr. Reverlett has explored for us, for the vision, for translated for the vision of the board, and translated for the vision of the town. So I just like to say thank you, and I'm excited. So I'm returning board members and new board members, so I'm looking forward to working with everyone. This year, and.
And we are going to, number ten, acceptance of minutes. Second.
Seven, so the meeting minutes, they were number ten, so much.
Yeah.
The Simmons?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Setti?
Yes.
Sola Rocker?
Yes.
Switzky?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Uh, Sola Sander?
Yes.
Looking at your agenda, I am asking you to make a motion to make this consent agenda from B one, one, to, be, I'm sorry, to be ten thirty. Thirty-one, exactly thirty-one. Any discussion, please? Anyone else? I can't hear you.
Ten minutes, I think we need to go to the other.
Anyone else?
Young men have stayed the most, uh, information.
Is for all of us, B one, number one, or Z ten, number three, the Simmons?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Setti?
Yes.
Sola Rocker?
All right.
Use your mic.
No is the number thirty abstaining. No, the number thirty abstaining, or anyone else? Ms. Switzky?
Switzky.
Williams?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yeah.
Sola Sander?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Um, I'm looking for a motion, please, for C1, one, two, C4, the other.
No.
Succession?
Can I apply on this breach?
No, I have time to pass.
This is for all of us, B1, number one, for C4, number one, is that here?
Yes.
The Simmons?
Yes.
Miss Breach?
Yes.
Solon Rocket?
Upstate.
Solitzky? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Solis?
Yes.
First thing on the news facility, one, yes? Uh, Salasen?
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Board members, we do not have executive session this evening. So we need a motion, yes?
Second.
Second? All right, now, before you leave, have a good night.